We're gonna call to order the November 25th Selectments Meeting. Meetings of the Board of Selectmen are generally recorded for transmission on Berlin Cable and Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. We have minutes from October 3rd, right? I think we do.
Twenty-third.
Twenty. Oh, 23rd. That was the Coffee Talk. Did, I made some suggested changes, Mary. Did you do that? No Mary McKelk and add Judy Mills? I don't think Mary McKelk was there.
No, Paul was. She had a food pantry.
She had a food pantry meeting. That was the only thing I had. Anybody else?
Uh-uh.
I hear a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Guess not. General public comment? Don't feel obligated. It's okay.
What time is your hearing?
7:15.
Okay.
So, do you want to move on to the Town Administrator Report or tackle something else?
I think there's enough time.
Okay.
I can squeeze it in. Okay. Under HR and Benefits, we are on the last Department Head Search Process now, and it's Fire Chief. Last week, we did conduct telephone interviews and narrowed the field of candidates to two finalists. I have scheduled a tactical exercise in oral interviews for next week to be conducted by MRI, so it'll be completely unbiased, taken out of the internal realm. The cost for the tactical exercise in oral interviews is $1,000, and I do highly recommend, I firmly believe in assessment centers for the chief positions because I do think it helps measure the professional capacity and the fitness of chiefs. So I recommend that the Board authorize payment for that phase from the Board's FY20 expense line. And then, final interviews are tentatively scheduled with the Board in open session on December 9th, and the appointment the Board makes that night, if there is a selected candidate, will be contingent on background checks, pre-employment medical and contract negotiations. Now, the cost for the complete background check is $1,550, and that will take about two weeks to complete. So that would give the Board a chance to begin contract negotiations. We could work on the pre-employment medical and things in the meantime. So I also recommend that that be paid from the Board's FY20 expense line. Onto other things. Any questions on that? No? Okay. Onto other things. The library septic. We had a meeting last week with the group, Board of Health Reps, Library Trustees, and Chris attended with me for the Select Board, and we met with Evan Carloni to discuss an Option 2 design, which would include moving the septic system and putting in a new well on the parcel. And today, we received some new information from DEP, information that I wasn't aware of prior to this. So I think we're, I'm gonna need a little clarification moving forward as to what we really have to do, what we're obligated to do under the DEP Administrative Consent Order. Administration Operations. I sent an email today to Board members to inform them about progress on the copier/lease agreement for the next three years. I have done a lot of background and cost analysis on it. I do believe that the new three-year lease agreement will be more beneficial to the town financially. I think that there'll be a savings of about $1,300 a year based on what we've been spending. And so, if the Board has any questions on that after reading my email, let me know because I would like to get that signed next week. So we have the new agreement in place for December when it's due to change. The MVP Program, again, I found out today that the town's planning grant application is being submitted on Wednesday, so that will be in the works, and we should hear something in the not-too-distant future. And finally, we have scheduled for Town Departments, Boards and Committees, an OSHA Regulations informational workshop. This is gonna be conducted by the Division of Local Standards at the state. There's gonna be an agent here conducting a workshop. All department employees, members of Boards and Committees, especially those Boards, Committees and Departments that actually use machinery or go out and do sit walks, things that involve hazards, are invited and encouraged to attend. That's gonna be December 5th at 3:00 PM, and it's gonna be in the police training room downstairs.
For those who might not, will there be paperwork afterwards?
There are gonna be handouts. He is gonna be doing an overhead presentation, so I'm sure we'll have that. And I could check with Cable to see if they might even be able to tape it.
I was thinking a lot of your Committees will not be able to attend at 3:00.
Yeah, yeah. I couldn't get him to come any later, unfortunately. He's coming in from Boston, and I tried. So maybe we can tape it. And that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
Go ahead. One more thing. Good time.
The HR Consultant request for quotes. I had to reissue that last week with more specific quote and submission requirements. I was not at all comfortable with the quotes that we received. So I did reissue that last week, and the deadline to submit quotes is now December 6th. So on December 9th, I will have an update for the Board on that.
Okay. Do you want to attack the 2019 Cyber Security Awareness Program Enrollment Agreement?
Okay. I just have to find my, I did do a recommendation for the Board on this. So this is, Lisa applied on behalf of the town, and we received a grant award. Now, this is not a funding grant, so no funding is gonna be paid directly to the town. It's going to be, we've been awarded essentially a one-year license, like training module license, to be able to better position our employees against cyber attacks. So this is, I think the one-year program begins when we execute the agreement, and I am recommending that the Board designate me as the local program coordinator. Chris should be authorized to sign the enrollment agreement, and I will be seeking assistance as needed from the IT Committee and others to help roll out the program. I know that we're gonna have some spreadsheets we need to prepare and some reports and other tasks along the way, so I will be seeking assistance as needed.
Okay. Do you need a vote?
Yes, please.
Move to sign the agreement and appoint Margaret the coordinator.
Seconded.
Okay. Anything else?
That's what happens after our year's up.
After our, we don't, we are not obligated to sign on to the license again. Well, I think what we see at the end of the year is just employees being better positioned to deal with cyber attacks, understand what's out there.
Basically, they'll do the training modules, and then there will be sort of tests where they send out spoofing emails and that sort of thing.
They give that at work, yeah.
If they fail, then there'll be sort of additional training.
Additional training.
Yep.
Is there stuff stored offsite? Okay.
Okay. So, hearing nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job. Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. There's another one for Chris to sign. Sorry.
About 7:15. I'm gonna open the public hearing for the new retail wine and malt beverage package store license. It's Energy North Incorporated, 265 Central Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This is a hearing of the Berlin Board of Selectmen as the local licensing, come on, sit down.
We know how close you wanted us.
Yeah, that's okay. As the local licensing authority relative to the application for the new retail wine and malt beverages package store license for Energy North Incorporated at 265 Central Street, this hearing is being recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Public Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. Notice of this hearing was published at least 10 days prior to this hearing in the Clinton item, and I asked the clerk of the Board to read the notice for the record.
Town of Berlin Public Hearing pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 138 of the Mass General Law as amended, application has been made and information given for approval of a new retail wine and malt beverages package good store license for Energy North Incorporated. Could you help me with the first name?
Osama.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Comma manager. The premise for said license are described as follows. Gas station slash convenience store consisting of a 1,020-foot, four-square-foot, one-story building located at 265 Central Street, Berlin, Mass. with two doorways for entrance and exit. A hearing on the above application will be held on Monday, November 25th, 2019, at 7:15 PM in the Selectmen's Office, Room 206, Berlantown Office Building, 23 Linden Street, Berlin, Mass. All interested parties should plan to attend. Board of Selectmen, Christine Keith, Lisa Wysocki, and Margaret Stone.
Okay. And I will recognize individuals one at a time to speak during this hearing, and members of the Board will be recognized should they have any questions or comments during the hearing. So we'll get started. Do you want to start with the description of the premises?
Introduction to who that are.
Oh, that would be, that would be nice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Brian Haney, H-A-N-E-Y. I am the attorney for Energy North. We have the entire team here, and I'll allow them to introduce themselves in just a moment. But first, I wanted to say we are delighted to be here this evening and thank the Board for its time and accommodation in allowing us to present our application. The team that will be speaking to you this evening as well consists of?
Yep. Joe Green, Director of Operations.
Osama Madkour, the manager.
Osama is also our Director of Loss Prevention in addition to the proposed manager of record. And then, just for contact purposes, there's a card with all my information on it.
Okay.
So, just for ease of reference, I have for the Board just a photo, a color copy of the, and I have three of them for you all, the proposed floor plan. And we can talk about it, we will talk about it if the Board would like to hear it, how our operational and security measures that exist in this location as well as others. So Energy North has owned and operated this location since 2014. It's at 265 Central Street. This is similar to several of our other locations, actually the vast majority of our other locations in that we own and operate the establishment. We are, when I say we, I mean Energy North, a high-quality operator. It's a family-owned business. This is not a national company, which just has a local footprint, so to speak. We are locally owned, locally operated. We work where we play, we play where we work, and we own everything that we work in. Energy North is also an experienced licensed operator within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and New England. In the Commonwealth, Energy North has two other Section 15 licensed premises, one in Essex and one in Gloucester. Within New England, specifically New Hampshire and Maine, Energy North operates 16 other licensed premises. So this is an experienced operator, not a fly-by-night, and this is not the first time we've decided to do this. I'm happy to say that in those 18 locations, there's a perfect record and no violations. So again, not just an experienced operator, but a successful one. In the communities in which we operate, we view ourselves not as simply a business in the community, but as a member of the community, and we conduct ourselves accordingly. With respect to this proposed location, as exists in the other locations, there is both an operations plan and a securities plan, or a security plan, and I'll let Joe speak to that in a little bit of detail. Before I do that, though, just a couple of administrative issues. I do have our returned, registered mail return receipts with Madam Chair, like those.
I think, yeah, I'll take those for our secretary.
Perfect. So we have those. With respect to this location, and in terms of the criteria by which a new license is issued, the so-called Balleran standards, we believe, and we have both evidence in the form of letters of support, as well as we're humbled and delighted to have a few folks here that are actually here to testify in support of our application, we believe we have a demonstrated public need for this particular licensed issue and this particular premises. This is beer and wine only. This is not all alcohol. There's also, as Joe will speak to, security measures for how that beer and wine is secured during hours in which it is not sold, whether it be when the store is open but not selling alcohol, or when the store is closed and not selling anything. We do not believe, and we have not heard any opposition, so we believe this is a very fair statement, that this poses any kind of a health or increased traffic risk. This is a, an application that has been met with favor by members of your community, as well as members of the immediately surrounding communities that frequent the establishment. To that end, I have, and these are the originals, approximately 150, I didn't actually count them letter for letter, but 150 letters that I'll submit to the Board for its consideration, signed by folks who identify their addresses as well, so you can see who lives in Berlin as well as in a surrounding community, that are speaking to their support. And again, we do have some folks, after you're done with us, that would like to say they support us as well. With that, I'll turn it over to the operations folks.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for having me today. So I think Brian said it best that we are a company that is part of the community. We don't just go in there and take our money and run. We establish ourselves in the community, and we want to do the right thing for the community. I think the difference between this one and some of the other companies I've seen is that this, what we're trying to establish here is an ancillary sale. It's one that has been asked for. It's one that when somebody goes in and tries to purchase subs or meal replacements, that they like to have a bottle of wine to go with that, as an example. So it's kind of, like I said, it's something that's nice, it's classy, we want to do it in a minimal space, spacing here. We don't have it all around the store. It's actually in the back of the location, so it's not when you come in. We also have it so that we can close it off between the time that we are opening and also the time that we're licensed to sell the beer and wine. So again, I just, I just want to stress that it's something that was asked for by the community, and we're here to try to answer that call in the best way we can, and again, in a very subtle and ancillary way.
Is this the current layout?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the current layout with the adjustment of where the beer and wine will be.
Right.
Yeah. If you grant the license. So a couple of the things, if you mind, would I let you know about a couple of the things? You know, it's not all about just selling to patrons. It's about making sure that beer and wine is controlled. It's a controlled substance for a reason. We do very, very well with our tobacco, and so we know that we can do very well with beer and wine. And so the other thing to note is that we have installed some security, not only from a video standpoint, to self-check ourselves, to make sure that we're doing the right thing with people that look under the age of 30, but also to stop a sale in the case whereas if something's scanned that has alcohol in it, if it's beer or wine, the register pops up with a date where they have to put in the date of birth of the ID. So what this does is it's called, it's basically a computer check, so that takes the human aspect out of it. I mean, we all can add and subtract, but sometimes we're under pressure, and you have five or six people in line. We don't want to risk that. So we invested in a system that can automatically calculate. All they have to do is put the ID in. This gives them a better chance to look at the ID, spend time looking to make sure this is the correct person. Many, many times, we have refused a sale. In fact, I gotta be honest, we refused a sale the other day, and I got in trouble because a woman said, "All I did was color my hair, and you guys didn't want to sell me the beer." So anyway, but I'd rather err on that. I'd rather them be more careful on that side. The other thing is that we have what's called a computer-based training, so every one of our cashiers have to go to a computer-based training, which is through RTO. And what they do is they set the expectations for what we want to have happen and how the transaction should happen. And also, it teaches them how to reject a transaction in a very safe manner. Okay? The other thing is that each one of our employees have to sign a documentation. That documentation basically tells them that it's a, you know, that they have to be very careful with this. It's a controlled substance. It's alcohol and beer and wine. It talks about the legalities of it, talks about being personally responsible and held responsible for that, and they sign that. And we find that when they sign their name to it, as opposed to even the computer-based training, that they, it feels like they take more responsibility for that, okay? They sign in data. We have signage on doors to make sure that people understand that we ID, and we ID frequently, and we ask people not to get upset with the fact that even though you might have purchased alcohol from Joe before, you know, Brian may ask for an ID too because they're just doing their job. So we do a lot of that, that informational piece. Again, the other piece that I like and that we've pushed forward is the self-check piece, where the, as I alluded to earlier, we have video cameras in our locations. Every one of the employees know that they're being videotaped, and they're being checked. And the reason why they know they're being checked is because people ask questions. Manager will watch video and purposely look for alcohol sale, purposely look for a tobacco sale and talk about it. Okay? So perception's reality. And so, can we see every single tobacco sale? Can we see every single alcohol sale? No. But we absolutely do talk to them about the good job that they've done, and you know, maybe even sometimes if somebody's like 35, 36, hey, you know, maybe you should have still asked for an ID. You know what I mean? So we try to encourage people to do their good, the right job, but at the same time, we also let them know that we're watching. So that's really important. We found a lot of success with that. I don't know if you had any other questions, but I felt like I'd open it up if you needed to ask me any others.
Are there any questions from the Board right now?
I'm just wondering, everything is really small on here. Could you sort of tell me where, I know that the player, Marshall, had some questions, where things are happening?
Yep. So, why don't you give her a copy so I can walk through it? So what we have is at the top right, wow, this looks a lot better on my screen than it does here.
Tiny, tiny, tiny.
Yeah, sorry. On the top right, you see the four doors, and that's gonna be for, you know, single, you know, bottles of wine, single bottles of wine. And, 'cause a lot of, you know, the white wines, they like to be refrigerated, and then we have three other doors of beer and beer. And then you'll see on the red, if you see here, on the red section, that's gonna be a section of six-foot worth of dry, they'll call it dry wine, or warm wine selections. And that's it.
So here and here.
Yeah. So we really want to make sure that we keep, we keep it at a minimum. Like I said, it's not gonna take up a huge amount in the store if you grant the license because it is an ancillary sale, as I said, and it really, try to fulfill a need that's been asked for.
Okay. Will you be removing any stock to put this in?
What we're gonna do is call SKU optimization. And so, a lot of times when we look and say, okay, if we do move forward with the license and it is granted to us, how do we fit it? So what we do is we run a SKU optimization. So what that means is really, the items that we currently have, there's some that are not, that're taking up too much real estate, not paying the rent, if you will. And so we do that, and we remove some products. So yes, to answer your question, it would be a yes, but we feel, we did the homework, and we feel that this is other space that we would be able to allot to without hurting the other products that people want. Because what you don't want to do is you don't want to say, "Well, where's your Cheerios now?" You got the beer and wine, but I wanted to get Cheerios and a Chardonnay. Who knows? Maybe they're like that. But, you know, you never know what people like. So again, we're trying to, we're trying to add to the effect and add to the experience, not subtract from it. Thank you for that question.
I have a few. Shocking, I know. Do you have a limit on how much you're selling? So can I go in and buy 15 cases of beer and 45 bottles of wine and stroll out the door?
Yeah, we haven't ever talked about that, but if that's something that you wanted to put in the license as a stipulation, we'd be more than happy. Again, this is not to sell to, you know, a big company down the street or something. It's just to kind of just have an ancillary. So we have, I've never thought of that, honestly, but if that's something you wanted to write in.
Ever come up, ever?
Never heard of it before. So, but that's okay.
There are limits in state law on how much a person can actually possess.
Yeah.
So that would cover a lot of that.
I was just, I actually was just gonna add that it, within, within the training is compliance with MGL 138, which is the Alcoholic Beverage Regulatory Act. And so, to the extent that there are limits with respect to an individual purchase of, on volume, also as well as in terms of observing the purchaser, to the extent that they appear to be intoxicated, it would be illegal for us to sell to them. So there are, the training does pick that up because that's within the compliance regulations for 138.
So is it a one-time? So, Tom, maybe this is your question. So I go in and I buy a case of beer. Half an hour later, I go back in and I buy another case of beer. An hour later, I go in and buy four bottles of wine.
Nothing that's gonna, there's no limit per day in what you can purchase. It's more about how much you can.
Yeah, at once. Okay.
Right. So, but to answer your question, as far as the, that's never come up, as far as the amount, but what has come up, obviously, is the training about intoxication and being able to, I mean, honestly, when somebody was coming there, I mean, after the second purchase, I'd be like, okay, this is really a little too much here. And look, and the good part about our company is that when they, when they get, the employees feel that like they're empowered to make those decisions, okay? And they're not gonna get into trouble. In fact, we err on the, I say to them, as the director, if you have any question, any question at all, I'd rather get a phone call from a customer being upset and be able, and be able to articulate why we were careful in that transaction than to have any doubt in your mind, because you're responsible for that, just like we are.
So you mentioned that your store managers will often go through and look at the videotape.
Yeah.
How long is that tape kept for?
We have, we have anywhere from two, depending on the system. We have anywhere from two to four weeks of videotape, and that has a lot to do with how many cameras and the amount of transactions, okay? 'Cause it turns on during transactions. So there's a few variables, but I haven't seen anything that's less than two weeks. And usually, they don't go further than four weeks. And that's checked daily. Okay? So that's not, so that they don't sit there and they wait for a week to check it. Every day, so they're checking the transactions, and they log those transactions as well.
That was my next question. So obviously, you looked at my paper.
I'm sorry, I have not.
It's all right. It's all good.
I gotta tell you, I won't be able to see that far.
Okay. And then you talked about your folks being trained. Is there any type of ongoing training? So I come, I get a job, I go through the initial training. Eight months later, do I go through it again?
So that's what I explained, you know, the piece that I love about it is that they talk not only about the things that may be questionable, they also talk about the good job that they're doing. And during that time, the one-on-one that the manager spends with them, they actually talk about either new regulations, or, you know, hey, it's going to 21 now, as an example with tobacco, you know, those type of things. They talk about new, and anytime any law changes, we actually have a new CBT come out, and also we have them re-sign their agreements. So there's that ongoing. We keep up with all of it. We, I'm a Nexema Board Member, which is a New England Convenience Store Association. So, and we have meetings. We get all of the information for the industry right there on that, so.
And has your manager been tips-trained?
Yes. So.
Okay.
Who's it for mine?
That was it for yours. So we want to go through the local reviews. Police Department, do you want to speak to it, or?
Yeah, we did criminal background checks on the five corporate officers, as well as the manager record. We found no issue. We kind of have some experience in this now. A few years ago, we had a similar license issued at the Burke Station on the other side of the highway. I think we had a lot of the same questions, a lot of the same concerns, and I can say from our experience from the police department's side, we didn't see huge increases in traffic at the site. It was the customers that were already coming there that were then making an additional purchase. And because of beer and wine being available there, we don't see a lot of problems, and I wouldn't expect it to be any different in this location.
I don't know if this helps, may I?
Sure.
Yeah, it's something, Mr. Burke and I are on board together for Nexema. We share a lot of the same type of controls, and I think the yearning to make sure that we sell things in a responsible manner and keep it. We just had this whole thing about tobacco and keeping it out of the hands of, he's one of those people, like myself, that really stand out and increase the fines, whatever you gotta do, I mean, for the bad people to kind of, you know, keep them away from those licenses. So, Mr. Burke? of, you know, keep them away from those licenses. So Mr. Burke's a really good operator, so.
According to the email we received from the building commissioner, I believe there were no issues. Fire did have several items. Were you copied on the email from the fire marshal?
I was not. We haven't seen that, ma'am, no.
Okay. We can provide a copy of that.
Great, if you don't mind.
And then after you review it, can you let us know how long it will take you to correct these issues?
Yeah. Actually, you want to take a look at this? I don't know if that, you might need a minute to look at it, though.
So number three, this would be, this would suffice. It says, "Didn't see a plan of it for the products and everything." Would that would be something that we would determine to him?
You could see, yeah, see if that would suffice with him.
We'll provide a copy with larger font and pictures.
I think that needs to be, it looks like it needs to be attached to the license application.
Yes, it does.
I believe it actually was, it's not in color. I think it's... Yeah. This is probably even worse, but it's exhibited to our application.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't.
That's actually worse. So I don't even want to punch do it.
I'm prepared to speak to some of them now, but I mean, these are, these are items that are normal, you know, the security piece, the gating, the locks. This is just everyday items that we would do anyway. And again, we wouldn't have it now because we don't have a need for it right now. But, you know, that plan is definitely already been talked about. We have a, she couldn't be here tonight. Julie Kandau is our marketing director. So she is the one who actually did the layout. She didn't go so far to put it into the back room, but that's already in planning, so.
Okay.
It's only, you know, again, we don't want, we don't want to be too facetious, you know? We want to kind of hope that we'll...
With the, with the working color doors, they're gonna have locks.
Yep. So a lot of these, a lot of these will...
I think probably just, you know, contacting him and letting him know what your plans are.
Yeah, these would be very quick, very quick to do. I mean, within a week, we could have these.
And he'll want to inspect what you have.
Oh, of course, of course. Oh, it makes sense, yeah.
Right.
This stuff's gonna be done before we do anything.
Yep. One of the things, as I said, may I continue?
Sure.
One of the things that I said earlier is that we want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. So we're community-based. We want to, we're here for a while, we own the building. We're gonna be here for a while. And again, we're just trying to add to the experience.
Okay. I'll just add that the Board of Health, the only concern that they had was the renewal of your retail food permit. And then, I don't believe you had any hours on your application, hours you were requesting.
Okay, those hours are gonna be eight to 11, Monday through Saturday, and then eight to 10 on Sunday.
Eight to 11, let's see, this is the...
Can it be eight on Sundays?
Hmm.
But eight to 11 o'clock, 10 a.m.
Yeah, eight to 11 on Monday through Saturday is permitted.
Yeah.
And...
Sorry, you said what? Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday, or until 11:30 on the preceding, on the day preceding a holiday.
Right, okay.
On Sundays, sales are allowed between 10 and 11 p.m.
So it'll be 10 to 10.
Right.
I think it's three holidays we have to move, Christmas.
Memorial Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas.
Yep.
Okay. So, so those are satisfactory?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay. So the one we'd have to change would be Sunday, I think. Is that correct?
No, Sunday it says 10, it says 10 to 11.
Oh, it just says 10 to 11, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
10 to 10 or 10 to 11?
10 to 10.
10 to 10, okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries. You had 10 to 10?
Sunday, 10 a.m. to 11.
All right, so yeah, he said that's 10.
We do just 10 to 10.
10 to 10.
Yep. Sorry about that.
That's fine. So I guess I would ask, open it up to the public if there's questions. Do you have a question, Lynn?
Hi, I'm just wondering if we're ever gonna get a sufficient number of trees so I don't have to look at your operation. I live on the same side of the street as you and just down the road a bit. Now, I know after your hearing for the fuel tank change, you did put some trees in, but it doesn't go to the back of the property. If I can just show you, may I? I put this way. This is what I see at night, okay? Now, you've put some trees in here. This is a great picture, isn't it? But, do you see?
Right. So you want to thicken it a little bit? Because we gave 12 additional trees in by request, but that's not enough, it seems. It's fine. We could get more.
I know you want to leave a spot up here so people can see what's coming, and I understand that.
Safety.
For safety. But, um, my house is back here. And this whole, you know, during the wintertime, and not only that, but the cars coming in, the lights. So, this is, you know, I know it'll take a few years for it to grow. Maybe after, I'm not living there, it'll be fine. But I'm wondering if you could do something around the back and maybe even it's...
With more trees, ma'am?
With more, yeah. And I think we just...
More trees, more fencing.
And these are the trees that we installed, right?
Yeah. These are the trees they installed. And this is sort of, they don't really go together, but they overlap. There's a piece in the front, and it's understandable that they would want a piece in the front so people can see cars coming and going. But it only goes to this point. Well, my house is back here. So the lights from, when the diesel in the back and everything, I see all of that, okay? So I'm wondering if, and maybe next time I understand, you see, this is what I look at, okay? And I didn't have the opportunity to get like a car coming in so that you could see what it's like when the high beams are facing at you. So if we could get some trees going in here, just so that I am not troubled by that.
Well, you're, you live a couple of houses down. You're a neighbor to us, so we want to maybe enable it. Please give me a call.
Actually, there's 40 feet between us.
Okay. Well, that's my cellphone, so we can talk further about it. We'll take care of it.
Well...
I guess Brian helped you with the 12 that you have there, no?
Well, I, other 12, I think I counted eight. But if we could just, if you would state that you would be glad to put in more trees, I would be a happy camper.
Absolutely. And you have my cellphone number there, too, so watch. I'll answer the phone.
And maybe next time, if they could be, you can see the size of them, okay? I mean, they're not very expensive to get, even five or six-foot ones. I mean, these are like three-foot ones.
Well, what I think would be best probably is if we meet at the site, if you have time to, and I could meet with you, and we could kind of draw up a plan, so that it'll help you. And then, you know, because I don't want to, if we talk about something that I think is good, you might not like that. So it'd be better if we...
Do you have any ideas other than planting trees?
Well, I'm not sure. Like, we've put fences up before, too, but I don't know what the...
The fence was a temporary thing until the trees took root, okay? It didn't last very long, which is unimportant. What I'm saying is I'd like to see more trees, and I'd like to see them a little healthier and bigger.
Okay.
Because I realize, you know, you're not gonna have 30-foot trees overnight.
Right.
But just to protect me from the lights coming in, and again, you can't, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, natural barriers are difficult because although we want to have more, more trees, we don't want to have the fences and everything. It doesn't look as nice. They have to have time to grow. But to her point, maybe we can get things a little bit taller, you know? So, yeah, so we could work that out and kind of talk with you afterwards. But you'll, you'll see that you'll be able to get in touch with us, I promise.
Getting in touch with you is great, as long as you follow through.
Absolutely. Thank you. And we, and the good part about that is that before me, there was a guy named Brian Promwood who put those in. So that was promised and that we delivered. And it wasn't the right one, but we'll, we'll adjust what we need to adjust.
Okay. Was there any other questions from the audience? You're saying you think that you can take care of these issues within...
A week.
A week.
A week?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay. So is there any other questions from the board?
No, I would just, I would go ahead and leave 30 days, just to give them time.
Good, thank you.
Okay. All right.
As the board did with the last applicant, the application will be submitted to ABCC in understanding that it takes time for that to get processed. You'll have time to take care of the code issues here, and then time for the report back to the board, so that once the application is approved at the state level, the town could issue the license.
Okay. If I hear no more, hear, if I don't hear any more questions, then I'm gonna say that the hearing is closed at this point. And I'll ask the board to either comment, question, or make a motion.
I move that we grant the license. They're an experienced applicant that obviously has done their due diligence.
Agreed. Second.
With the additional...
Correct, 30 days.
Oh, 30 days, so on and so forth, to rectify the, the things that were of concern.
And to add to the board's motion and vote, so that I just want to confirm the requested hours are 8 a.m. to 11 p.m. Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. on Sunday. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And if I could, through the chair, the copy of the sketch of the premises will be attached to your license. So that will remain with the license.
Of course.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, I'll call for a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You as well.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. At least they hold paths on the selected and not on the dirt.
Really? And thank you for the help with the name. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's why.
I appreciate that. I read it a couple times and went, oh, I hope he's here. So, thank you.
Yeah, that's why I had you read it.
Oh, thanks, great. Appreciate your partnership here.
Yeah.
Warms my heart, thanks.
All right. We're gonna move on to the marijuana HCA procedure. You had a couple of red lines in the, through the chair. The, the draft that came to the board last week for an introduction has been slightly modified based on feedback I received from the planning board. It is the zoning board of appeals, not the planning board, that actually has jurisdiction on, with marijuana establishments in town. So I have scratched and the planning board from section number one and kept just the building commissioner. And then, we will attach the relevant portion of the zoning bylaw, so the bylaws are relevant to marijuana establishments. And then, in section three, this, I did add the words, "at their sole expense," so that it would put the burden, any financial burden of holding the coast, the community outreach meeting on the applicant. And finally, under section five, where the applicant is required to pay a fee, I've just clarified that that fee is required to be turned in with the package that's identified in step four to the select board. And that's it.
Margaret, is it just gonna be the Clinton item? It's not gonna be the telegram and gazette?
It could be. What section are you on?
Three.
You're on section three.
It's just saying the meeting notice should be publicized in the Clinton item. I just didn't know, like, if there was a broader audience that read the full gazette and not just the item.
We could act, we could, we could certainly add Worcester Telegram and Gazette, or you could say publicized.
Yeah, correct, they are part of, but I didn't know if you just list the item, if it's just the item, or if it's the gazette and the item.
I can show a blip, but I think for multiple boards, it's just whatever deadline they can get it in to meet their notice requirement. So I don't think it's really, it's never been held steadfast to one or the other.
Okay. All right, then I'm good.
Whatever you want.
And...
Do you want to specify that, or do you want to make it broader, where you do local publications such as?
Yeah, you could say publicized at a minimum in the Clinton item, or you could broaden it somehow. And also, rather than, I should have changed this, rather than the word "should" in the second line in that section, it should say "shall." The meeting notice shall be publicized.
And that, is that in three?
That's paragraph three, yeah, second line.
Ah, there we go.
So it's not optional?
No, it won't be optional. Get the word out there.
Do you know what the, the expense is, Margaret?
I have absolutely no idea what the expense of a community outreach meeting is. I can't imagine it's too much.
It's not too much.
Okay.
If they were gonna do it at, like, 19 Carter, it's $100 for the room and snacks.
Yeah, if they want to serve refreshments and things like that. Don't know.
So do you want to, did you say you wanted it to be changed for publicized in the Clinton?
No, Lisa was saying just like a broader reach, including, but not limited to.
Okay, so how did you want to, how did you want to work that?
One or the other.
It's fine with Clinton. I just asked. If Clinton item is Clinton item, then it's Clinton item. Not a biggie.
But it's harder to get into that because it's only one day a week. Right, Lynn? Do you, you accept down notice for, for even newspaper?
The only ones we've been involved with is the telegram and the Clinton item.
But it's changeable.
The difference is usually when they go to the telegram, it's pretty expensive to put an ad in the telegram. It's not quite as expensive to put one in the Clinton item. But you can get it into the telegram because it's a daily-type thing.
Yeah.
Where you've got to get it in the Wednesday before the paper is distributed on Friday, early on Wednesday, in order to get it in for that Friday.
Okay. I mean, we're gonna know well in advance, so I don't think that the time should be an issue.
I suggest, I suggest adding the words, "The meeting notice shall be publicized at a minimum in the Clinton item."
That works.
Sounds good.
We give them the drawers. They can do either, as long as it's two weeks in advance of the hearing.
Margaret, would you ever anticipate on number five, the cost being higher than $5,000? And if it is, is there any opportunity to go back and ask for more?
I haven't left that open here, but I, at this point, still really early, at this point, I, I wouldn't imagine the cost exceeding $5,000 for the H state negotiations, only. And this is only for H state negotiations, nothing else. All the special permits, everything else would be outside of this procedure. So I could certainly add something to open that up, if you'd like.
Make the minimum $5,000.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just concerned that if we say it's $5,000, something gets stuck in legalness.
Well, it'd only be the contract going back and forth between...
This is just a review.
Yeah, usually, I, I can't imagine it. But if you want to safeguard this, we could certainly add a sentence at the end saying, you know, alternatively, if costs exceed $5,000, the town will invoice the applicant accordingly and will proceed once additional monies are received or something.
Kind of like that.
Okay. So with these changes... So, with these changes, do we want to approve, or do you want to bring it back next?
If you would like to, I guess I would appreciate the board approving it with the amendments, and I'm happy to share the amendments with you, so I'd like to just get this on the record and have it in place.
Yeah. Do you have a question?
Yeah, do you have any latitude in, like, only do special permits and so forth? We can limit them to five years, and the people have to come back and reapply. And I'm just wondering if there's any advantage to that.
The host community agreement itself does have a renewal, well, the drafts we've been working on have renewal provisions. So, the host community agreement itself is good for five years, and then we would renew for the terms of the five subsequent years. So, I guess...
We found that very helpful.
Yeah, I think it would be.
Because it's very difficult to police some of the things that the ZBA does. So, if they have to come back for renewal, then the neighbors have a chance to say, yeah, bye. You know, you granted a home-based contracting business. We do it for five years, and then it has to be renewed in five years. If the neighbors come and say, oh, yeah, I'm going to have one truck, he's got twelve, that's the kind of thing that we can review at the end of the five years. So, I think that's very healthy.
So, there's actually a hearing for the renewal?
Yes.
Okay.
It ends, okay? The license or whatever ends.
And then they have to come back.
And then, they have to come back before it ends, otherwise they're in violation, and have another hearing.
With a butters or whoever being notified, and so on and so forth?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've got the five year in there, and that's good feedback. Okay.
Motion to approve the document with amendments.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty. We'll have, we'll move on to the Berlin Memorial School lighting retrofit contract. I'm happy to report that after significant, oh, I don't see them here, but the lighting retrofit contract for the boards, after, after a lot of legal review, I don't want to say a lot of legal review, but after sufficient legal review, you do have an agreement now before you that is, that is approved as to legal form by town council. So, this is one of, this is an agreement that started with a vendor and was, and was substantially changed to be able to meet the town's needs. So, it's now in a form that the town approves, and it's ready for the board's signature. So, my recommendation is that the board execute this, this agreement, and we contact the school, contact the vendor, and let them get started on the work. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to sign the contract.
Seconded.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Does this go with that, or is this something separate?
That's on the separate.
That is under the business.
Okay. So, is there a contract we need to sign tonight?
Yes, I think that's being printed out right now.
I printed it short conversion for you all, because it's twenty-two pages, but I'm trying to do it now for you to sign. It does have a line for you to hit, or a line.
To point, just point where you want me to point. So, I don't make a mistake.
It just doesn't have a line for you to hit, so I'll put a line on it.
All right. So, I believe we are going to defer the next item on the agenda?
Yes, we are expecting a resignation in writing, and so I would ask the board to defer this.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the, did you touch on the HR consulting?
HR consulting, we've, I've had to reject all quotes. I had to do that last week, and quotes have, yeah, request for quotes has been reissued.
Okay, and the next thing on the agenda is to widen the abutter notification radius for liquor license hearings. So, the board has in your packet, notification, you've got the radius for notifications for various licenses issued by the town. The liquor license, the required notices are to direct abutters and across the street, oh, I'm sorry, direct and across the street abutters, and five hundred feet, and any schools, churches, or hospitals within five hundred feet. So, the request is, or for the board's consideration, would you be, and you do have the authority to do this, would you be interested in doing an abutters notification that's more consistent with the, with other permits and licenses that are issued in town?
Do we know why this one was set the way it was? Is it just...
It's, that's actually a state requirement. So, that's like a minimum requirement, yes, on the liquor licenses. I have no problem with this. Do you want to speak to it, Lynn?
I'd just say, I find it disappointing. Again, with the gas station next door to me, I do not receive any notification. I'm forty feet from their lot line. There is a former road that goes up and back that is private, that belongs to someone else. So, I would think a liquor license would affect neighbors that are closer, you know, that are that close. So, if it were consistent with the other licenses you give, I think that that would be reasonable.
Okay.
What are you proposing, may I ask?
Five hundred feet.
Isn't it five hundred feet now?
Where's, where's five hundred coming from?
Only two.
We were suggesting...
Three hundred, three hundred?
Oh, so you were suggesting, you're so...
Well, if we're going to be consistent, there's nothing about five hundred.
Well, no, it would be consistent with this. The school, church, or the hospital would be five hundred feet. So, if we just made it five hundred feet.
For everything?
Yes, for any abutter.
There's no burden to the town for doing that. It's no different than putting in the newspaper. It just widens the obligation at the applicant's expense to send direct notification to everything, everyone within a five hundred foot radius of the property in question. So, it's actually, it's more protective of your, your neighbors.
So, if you change it to three hundred feet, then you have to keep the additional language about the school. Is that correct? Yeah, you would have to.
Yes, you would still have to keep that.
So...
But that also then does make it consistent with every other thing on there, and it's just churches or hospitals that are the five hundred feet, and schools.
It would just make the whole thing five hundred feet, right?
So, are you changing conservation down?
No, you can't touch anything.
No, no.
Just liquor. Okay.
Actually, conservation could update if they want to. They could go four or five hundred. They could go wider if they want to. It's a local prerogative to require more notice.
So, I, I mean, I have no problem with the five hundred feet.
No, I like it.
So, I would make a motion to change it to the five hundred feet.
Seconded.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor?
One more.
Oh, okay.
Just one question. That five hundred feet, is it of the lot line, is it across the street?
I would imagine.
My question for that is, if you look at the petition that was just in here, I saw the list of abutters that were notified. Now, I don't know if you know where the Ziegler's live? Do you, they have that house that's right practically on the street, across the street from that station?
Yeah.
They're not on the notification list.
So, with five hundred feet, though, would they not?
Well, that's why I'm, why I'm asking. I don't have the verbiage, so I'm wondering if that would include across the street.
So, we would have to actually refer to the statute that governs this, right, the abutters notifications? Does it actually define where, where the five hundred feet is drawn from?
You can define it wider than what the statute requires.
So, why don't you define it from the...
Any lot line?
I'm questioning why they didn't get notified, because it says "direct and across the street." If they are directly, if they are across the street, they should have been notified.
Are they the White House?
So, it sounds to me like something went wrong with the, the list.
Before you go on to the Row 195, on the left-hand side.
Right across from Taylor.
Oh, oh, okay.
Right across the street from Taylor's.
Yep.
And there is a piece of land that belongs to the, the gas station that is next to Taylor's, okay, because Taylor Road went down there afterwards. So, I don't know. I believe last time they were notified, when they, when it came to the...
Underground view.
Yes, I think they were on the list.
I think we need to talk to, maybe talk to Molly about how these are pulled before we start throwing other language in here, and, because I'm assuming that she has a consistent, or there should be a consistent process over there for all of these, because there's not extensive language on here.
I would, I would assume that it's from the lot line.
But Molly is the one who pulls the list, so...
Because not too many roads are more than five hundred feet wide.
Right. And I believe some of these statutes, the governing statutes actually prescribe where the, where the, the boundaries are drawn, or how the boundaries are drawn. So, do we want...
So, I don't think I would overcomplicate this. We could, we could definitely ask Molly before we do this, what her input would be.
Well, we had a motion and a second on the table.
We can table the motion also.
Okay.
Until we have all the information.
I'm happy to check with Molly and bring it back to the board next week.
Okay.
Is that good with you?
Yes.
All right. All right.
Good. Our assessor.
Okay. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty license renewals. First one is Dagno's, 264 West Street. And the paperwork is all good, Mary?
Dagno's doesn't have an inspection. It's a package store, so it's, the paperwork's all in order.
Right.
The only thing you do is just condition the release upon payment, but that's difficult. They haven't paid yet.
Okay.
They don't have a, an inspection? I thought they were doing inspections on all of these.
When it's consumed on premises, not off premises.
All right, so do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Regal, Solomon Pond Mall, 591 Donald Lynch Boulevard, we have an all-alcohol restaurant license, a public amusement, and a common victuaries.
So, that is actually, excuse me, that is act, the Regal is waiting until next meeting?
Yes, because that has not been inspected. That is a restaurant.
Oh, okay.
Local license.
This is for...
The earlier, newer license.
Is that was the only one we needed to sign, correct?
That's the only one.
All righty.
Thank you.
Back to you.
Okay, so we'll talk about Regal at the next meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Um, actually, it might be after that, because he's still trying to light everyone's appointment up for inspection.
Oh, all right. Does that have to be done by?
The building inspector.
The thirtieth?
No, that's different. I have those. I have almost everyone's forms in.
The others are, these are for like December thirty-first, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I think we're on to board questions and comments.
You always look at me.
Yes, I do.
You have some good comments.
Sometimes. So, this was, I had sent this around, we had tabled this from last week, to light up the center of town, since we're not lighting the, on church property. So, didn't know if, I mean, in the background, obviously, we'll change the background, because it's dark for that, but I don't know if there are any changes to wording that you wanted.
It looked a little more exciting when I saw it online.
Well, I think you lose it when you print it. So, I want to make it like as festive, as festiveist for the rest of us.
Yeah, it needs to be a little festive, don't you think?
As possible.
I don't think you should have anything referring to faith in something that's coming from your town government.
Okay.
Okay.
So, leave it as, whether it be classic white, or colors of the rainbow, or how do we want to word that? Because of my, so Christmas in Berlin is the seventh, which is coming up, so I'd like to drop these off probably on Friday, if it's approved, and we can get the changes in, so that the general store, the bank, National Lumber, Nineteen Carter, gotcha, and, and the library have time to look into it. And again, it's, it's their choice. It's not, it's not something we're pushing, it's just an idea to light up the town.
I would, I would just say, just striking or faith-specific. So, you could, it could read, whether it be classic white or all the colors of the rainbow, we would love to see the heart of Berlin be the center of festivities.
Okay, all right, and I'll get the background, yeah, I'll get the background fixed as well, so it's a little lighter.
Mm-hmm.
And drop them off. Cool?
Yeah, I also think you could just take off the, the first part, and just, we would be very pleased if our local businesses would contribute to holiday cheer by decorating their buildings with us by December seventh, whether it be et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, cool. All right, so I'll scratch.
Nice.
All right, so what am I scratching? So, scratch, so scratch out, as you may know?
Yeah.
Christmas in Berlin is on December seventh.
I would take that whole bit out about Christmas in Berlin, because that's not something that everybody takes part in.
That's the name of it, isn't it?
No, we, well, we can't, let's light up Berlin.
Just put, yeah, it's, this is just about lighting up the town. This isn't about, that's a big business sponsor thing, that has nothing to do with us.
So, start, we would be very pleased?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
How about we would be thrilled?
Thrilled! We would be thrilled! All right. Okay, I'll make the changes. So, we'll read, we'd be thrilled if our local businesses could contribute to the holiday cheer by decorating their buildings with us, whether it be classic white or all colors of the rainbow. We would love to see the heart of Berlin be the center of festivities. Thank you for your consideration, the Berlin Selectmen. Oh, any questions, they get to contact me. Okay, cool.
Berlin Selectmen.
Selectmen.
Soon.
Soon.
May I, may I offer that? That was another thing that I didn't add to the town administrator report. So, the validation of the town meeting proceedings has been held up in the legislature for months, and they are working on it, but I don't know how quickly they can get it through. So, I did receive a response, and they say that they're going to try to move it as quickly as possible. But all of Berlin's, all of Berlin's bylaws voted at the annual town meeting are just on hold. Right.
So, then are we, so are we the Berlin Selectmen, or the Select Board, technically?
Well, this isn't a legal document.
Yeah.
We put Select Board.
How about, thank you for your consideration, Chris, Lisa, and Peg, and Margaret?
Do you think everybody actually knows who we are?
Yeah, I think you should just say Selectmen. I think Selectmen, just leave it Selectmen.
P.S., Chris, Lisa.
Or put Select Board underneath it, I don't care.
That's fine, all right. What?
Yeah.
Select Board, AKA Select.
AKA.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, I'll get that done, thank you. I'm done.
They did get this, they did get the meeting through by the end of December last year, so...
You mean the AG?
It went through.
Yeah, by the end of December.
By the end of December, yes.
Oh, yes, that was the last one that I had. Thanks.
Well, you can keep that if you'd like.
Okay, then I'll bring it up next week. Okay, we'll put it in the book.
Okay. All right. No more questions or comments? All right, then.
I'd just like to thank you for your consideration of my trees and changing the...
Foot.
Notification area. Yeah, I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
We take care of our Berlin peeps.
I hope so.
It's what we do.
So we do have need for a quick executive session pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the treasurer collector, and to vote or approve executive session meeting minutes.
And to come back to leave by side of the eye.
And only, coming back only to adjourn.
She said...
Key 5.
Stone I.